This conference will now be recorded.
Good.
Chaplain? Tonight, can you use the mic to report?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, you have a wonderful voice. But we're on the air, and I can't hear you, and I can't read your lips. So what are... Hey Travis? Guys? See if those guys want to come in. No, definitely. Never mind. Chief is here, and I just haven't come in. We'll call this main order. Chaplain? Would you stand and pray with me?
Dear Lord and Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as our mayor and ministerial council members install, make those decisions for the betterment of our community and citizens. We will also ask your protection of all our first responders, police, fire, hospital, and all working in healthcare to serve us while risking their own lives, perhaps especially those wonderful volunteers now administering the vaccines. We would ask your blessing and protection for all armed service members who gave so much to create and preserve this wonderful constitutional republic, and especially at this perilous time, and who serve throughout the world today on our behalf that we might continue to enjoy our many freedoms. We have served like coal for over 240 years, and that we remember that this is the greatest democracy ever. Now, tonight, as we leave this evening, this chamber, please protect our loved ones and some of our loved ones who keep us free from harm until we meet again. All of us, we pray in the name of your son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Well, it was just to the lives of the United States of America and to the power of the United Nations, one nation under God, and for the good of the people, and for the good of us all. Our lady, your goal, please?
Dooley?
Here.
Oden?
Here.
Dawson?
He's absent.
He's absent. He's August?
She's absent.
Okay. Don't you see?
Here.
Cross? Foster?
Foster?
Here.
And Bill?
Here.
So today, I said, "Joey, who's Travis?" They had no idea who Travis was, and that had dawned on me. So everybody left, and his real name was Travis. He was already from the city. It says there, "Five years, five years, and then what?" It seemed like it. I tell you, it's crazy. I mean, this guy is a very good guy. I mean, if we need to talk quick, we had a work at Antarctica. We had a throat, a sink run off the wall. And then working on that, I won our lines today. So the fire trucker with this crew, they said, "We need to cut some line out and fix a fire." He did. Anyway, we think they have what to do, so talk. Okay, we have a lot in the through the management number one.
Salute.
Officer? The post. Okay, sure, woman.
I'm...
Foster? Five minutes.
How are you?
Administration. You've got a lot to do tonight.
Thank you. Let's see. Okay. So let's see, first off, we have... We're going to hear from our fabulous citizen. Chaplain, so tell us all about the budget preview, please.
Well, we'll start out with going through the budget preview for 2022. Purpose of today's session is just to review the upcoming FY22 budget. The goal is to tell the city's financial story without being too technical. We're going to look at it from about the 5,000-foot range and just really set the stage for us looking at it more in depth as we come to the next few meetings. We'll have a budget work session next Monday and go through it in more detail.
Chaplain, what's our goal of getting this finalized?
The date, March 15th.
And that's what we want to prove it. Yes, we want to have it proved before that.
Well, yeah, we want to go through the work session on the 22nd. And then, if necessary, we'll go through it again on the 1st and then prove it on the 15th.
And it's critical that we get this done by that period of time, true?
Well, it's critical that we have it done by 3:31. If we don't, there are provisions that the budget carries over into the next year based on those spending levels right now. But we really don't want to get there. We just want to get it done and get through it. Thank you, sir. We'll start with where we're at and look to where we're going. We'll start out with the missions and principles where we're at, the state of the city, and then the trends. And then finally, the budget preview. And I don't know what happened to my deal, but it's gotten bigger, so it's out the screen there. Mission of the city is restated there. That's our mission statement. As we do that, we have our standards of service, and we use to acronym our service for S for the strong budget, E for the economical goal or growth, R for residential neighborhoods, B for vibrant downtown, I for immediate ideas for the future, C for the citizens' health and safety, and E, finally, we can't do it all without the excellence of employees. So to start off with, we'll start from that and look to where we're going. So to start is the state of the city. And simply said, I believe the state of the city is great. We are financially stable. We have a double A minus credit rating, $42 million budget, and a $13 million general fund of debt. And our general fund balance is 62% of our annual operating revenue. We are growing. We have a diverse base of job creators. We have several expansions and new developments. And over the last three years, we've added 77 million dollars per year in annual payrolls. In retail development, there's some examples of the retail developments that we've been able to enjoy or attract here over the last year or two. Other developments, the Henson M, the Lee Aquarius, or the Houston Bank, et cetera, the Katy Trail Connection, the Trust Building, the workforce development, and then Katy Trail Health, and then also the Child Save. We've had several infrastructure updates, and we've been working on this for the last few years. Water lines and mains for that was that $12 million project. It was started in 2018. And it's a three-year project, so we've got basically this year kind of wrapping that up and getting all that done. Of course, we're managing a little snag with the Blue Island folks here lately, as we talked about at the last council meeting. But we'll get that taken care of. That's the purpose of performance bonus. We'll use that and go on. But anyway, the sewer stations and mains that we're working on, the central plant upgrades, and then the reclamation of the Winchester. We've been able to get several housing developments going. You know, of course, this is maybe we still need more of, but we have had some successes in that area. We implemented a neighborhood revitalization concept to include the development of the 353 redevelopment area. And the Soria Urban New Development Corporation has been formed, and it's up and running. Then we have what I call game changers, or the things that I think are really changed the whole landscape for the city. The head of community center is certainly the first that comes to mind when I do the game changer. And again, I apologize for the slide down. They were flying upstairs. I don't know what happened to your pitch. The soon after plan allowed us to get over the hump there. And with that, we were able to go out and solicit the voters to see if they wanted to support it. And well and behold, with a record turnout, they said with an 80% voice that, yes, we will put out another eighth of a cent in sales tax to support this. And then also, we moved the CIT sales tax sunset, which was very important to be able to borrow the money to do that. And then we were also successful in negotiating a partnership with the school district to expand the pool, to add the funding there. Also, as far as game changers, the rail spur was a $10 million grant. That was a great addition there. The Katy Trail Connection was done with a million-dollar grant from the state. And then the state did their portion outside of town. So that is now improved. There's some wins and things that they've got to do, but the trail is there and up and going. So of course, right now, it'd be a little bit hard to ride it on or walk on, but it's all with snow and everything, and it'd be a little cool out there. The airport hangar, we were able to seize upon that opportunity that came our way and purchase the hangar. And as you can see, Derek's already got plans in it, so we're up and running on that. The All-In Power Tech Center is going. A lot of this childhood development center, as the school district's doing. The water and sewer master plan, some upgrades. The streetscape on Ohio and Pacific is done, finally. And then the urban redevelopment plan, and then the comprehensive plan, and then finally bringing those kind of all together, those last two, the comprehensive plan and the branding, with the logo and the tagline. And then within this budget, and we actually talked about it, the strategic plan, we've prioritized some funding to get that put out and splash the message, if you will. So what's next? We want to keep the momentum going, and we want to attract and grow. We want to, under the branding category, we need to tell our story now that we kind of have pulled together what our story is. We need to tell it. We need to develop the rally pride, and rally cry, and instill pride in those to help us get there. Continue the economic development. We are getting noticed, and we just need to capitalize on that and keep our name and our assets, if you will, out there so that they know this is a good place to come and develop that. We need to attract and develop the workforce to keep that going. You've got to raise both at the same time, or all the things at the same time, and you can't let one get too far ahead of the other. You can't get economic development without the workforce, and you can't get the workforce without the economic development. And then also, the housing goes right along with that. So you've got to keep all of that pushing together, and then the retail recruitment goes along with that. You know, they say retail follows jobs, but then you can't just wait for it. You've got to go get it. All of that has to happen, and we want that workforce. We want them to live here. We draw from quite a ways away, but we want to change that to where the majority of the folks are living here with us. And we need to also keep up with the infrastructure needs. As we do more economic development, we need more and more infrastructure. So again, it goes hand in hand. And then finally, the housing quality. We want to be, yes, but we really want to up the game on the quality of our houses. So in the 2021 planning session, where we went through this on the Saturday, the ninth, that we went through with council, we talked about we wanted to continue to focus on the why's. You know, we can get too caught up in the how, the budget, or the what, the services that are provided, and forget the why, why are we doing this in the first place? So we kind of talked about keeping that focus and keeping what it is that we're trying to accomplish and why we're trying to accomplish it, and makes those decisions easier. As it relates to financial planning, we want to avoid the government thought of how much money do we have and where are we going to spend it? We want to look at why we're doing, what we're doing, and then figure out where we're going to get the money to do it. It's not a zero-based budgeting, but it is closer on the scale towards that. And one of the things that I'm big on is the concepts of lean or lean manufacturing. And you know, a lot of people get afraid of that word that they think it means that because that's not what it means. The concept is looking at everything from the customer's perspective, and anything that does not add value to the customer is inherently waste. And so if you focus on everything from the customer's perspective as to how does that generate value for them, and then eliminate everything else, then that's basically the concept that we're after. The other concept that I'm big on is the continuous improvement. I agree, wholeheartedly, it can always be better. Continuous improvement is a journey. It's not a destination. It can always be better, so you're never there. But if you keep that mindset that we're always looking for a better way to do things, more innovation, more efficiency, and more services that we can provide, then that will help us drive to where we need to be. We've increased our ability for data-driven decisions. We've done the citizen surveys for several years, but then this year, we really focused on branding and the comprehensive plan. We did several interviews, several focus groups. We did a lot of data gathering in both of those and listening to our customers, what were they saying about us? What did they think they want us to be? And all of those kinds of things. So that really provided us some very valuable information that we'll continue to use going forward. We've also developed embedded databases that we've been using for several years now. It has a lot of good history and a lot of structure to building the budgets. And then performance measures. And really, what they're designing for is to make those value judgments. What is it that we're providing value? What value are we providing? We've also implemented longer-range financial planning tools, the five-year capital improvement plan, the three-year line item forecast within the budget, and then also leading us to the strategic plan. We also did the department presentations, and we asked each of those department entities, they made their presentation, to answer four questions. One is, why is the service needed? Why should the city be doing it? What level of service are we providing now? And then their strategies for going forward. We also separated the priorities by what is competing for the same funds. And so when we go through the rankings, we'll separate those out by funding type, if you will, and go through that. So as a result, those rankings, the general fund, we had ten things that council ranked in their session, in their planning session. Coming out number one was the police recruitment incentives at about $30,000. Two was launch the branding and identity messaging at $50,000. Number three was the 353 neighborhood revitalization team money, another $200,000 to get that off the ground. Four was demolition of dangerous buildings funding level, again, continuing that at $100,000. Non-people weapons expansion for $50,000, which came in number five. Number six was the redesign of the website and potentially application. Number seven was the title cleanup work that we've been engaged in for the last about a year and a half. Number eight was community development. We added a vehicle, are adding a vehicle for the added staff that we now have in that. Number nine was the curb kennel door finish upgrade for the animal shelter. And number 10 was the animal shelter meat and grease area at $9,000. The transportation fund, coming out of a different pot of money, if you will. We had five items that we ranked there. And coming out number one was the airport hangar grant match. That's $58,000. That's currently in design for this year and should start construction next year. Number two was the roadway maintenance to add a mower, was $12,000. Number three was chain hangar grant match for 136.5. Number four was the construction of the parallel taxiway to airport main runway grant, grant match of $400,000. That's about a $4 million project. And then number five was reconstruct the airport runway 523. And again, that's a grant match. That's about a $1.1 million grant for a $110,000 match. For capital improvements, we had 16 items that we ranked. Number one was the sidewalk and curb funding level to continue that as to what we did in amendment four this year to get it up to $500,000. In previous years, it's been $100,000. And I think the highest we ever got is like $200,000. So that was something that came out very high in the study that we did for the urban redevelopment, as a lot of our sidewalks are in really poor shape. It also came out very big in the information we were hearing from the branding as well as the comprehensive plan. So that funding really aligns very well. Council's priorities align very well with what we're hearing from the community. Second was the 32nd and limit lane addition improvement. And we'll talk about this more in the budget work session, but I had put this in the budget as sharing agreement with the NODOT. Now, we haven't been able to talk to NODOT yet, but if we can get it in there, then I think we should approach them to see if they could share a part of that cost. Number three was the Monument Way Careway finding signage for the brand launch at $200,000. Number four was the South Bronx Bondway to 24th Street. Number five was increase the stormwater project funding. We have about $2.5 million worth of projects on our master plan, and so we need to set aside some money to keep that project, or keep those going. Number six was the fire SCBA equipment. And we're hoping, again, that we submitted the grant again this year, and we're hoping to let in the budget is what we've proposed and let's prioritize there is the $30,000 approximate grant match that we'll need for that project. State pair upgrade, main to prime energy drive in Alamo Valley. Number eight was North Harding and Booneville upgrades to get from 50 Highway to the airport. Number nine was the Katy Trail Bridge overpass painting. And that was kind of part of the brand launch or the brand messaging was to paint the road there and those kinds of things on that interest, make a better-looking interest into the city from the south. 55 Highway Ranch at Main Street. And again, that would be a cost-sharing program with NODOT and would need to get their attention on that and see if we can move that project forward. Number 11 was extend the Winchester from 16th to Sacramento Gia. Number 12 was the Cedar Drive project, and that's the partnership with the county where they're proposing that what their project that they're working on or trying to get going is to light and see the drive. And then this would be the portion inside the city limits to really connect Cedar Drive to Engineer. Central fire station upgrade was number 13. Number 14 was the downtown decorative lights purchase. Number 15 was more engineer upgrade from the railroad to the cemetery. And number 16 was extend primary drive to Oak Grove. So as we approach the budget, we made some assumptions by staff that the established priorities and objectives will continue during the current year. And first, those that we made the assumptions were maintain a strong budget with the general fund balance within the council-approved limits. And then what I call structurally balanced, it's not a balanced budget, but it's within the fund balance policy and maintaining a strong fund balance at the end of the year. We want to emphasize customer service and lean thinking, the why's. Focus on the why. And number three is continue the strong budget process with fiscal discipline, generating, again, looking at value to the customer. And then continue the infrastructure improvements and continue focus on city personnel professional development and continue focus on planning growth and development. Number seven, continued support for economic development and jobs. And number eight is continued focus on neighborhood revitalization as an overarching priority. And then finally, I make the statement that priorities and objectives are reflected through the budget, and that really becomes a policymaking tool for our council. So when you're adopting a budget or appropriating your funds, you're authorizing staff to carry out those priorities and objectives. And so therefore, it really is a policymaking document that council approves. And some, including we, would argue that it's one of the most important functions that the council does. Of course, I'm a little prejudiced being a numbers guy. So developing or reviewing the budget, since we went through, was the, since we had a two-week period where the mayor, myself, and Don sat down with each department head, where they went through their budgets. We go through them line by line, sometimes kind of a tenuous process or a lengthy process, and a lot of discussion, a lot of talking through with what we're trying to accomplish and those kinds of things. Which really, each department gets the opportunity to present or, if you will, sell their budget or sell their proposal to us. For a budget request to survive, it had to have an excellent reason for being included. You know, everybody will tell you when they put miscellaneous or other, it usually gets cut. You know, they have to tell me what they're trying to do and why they need the funds. And you know, unfortunately, they do a good job, or fortunately, they do a good job of presenting them, and it makes my job a lot harder. They present good things. We want to fund all of them, but we can't fund them all. So we have to make some tough choices when we're going through. If they put miscellaneous or other on everything, it'd make my job a lot easier because I could just cut where I wanted to cut. You know, so. They do a good job. So many come to the annual planning and prior organization sessions that we just went through. Those are taken into consideration, doing these reviews. You know, the higher the ranking by council, the more likely it is to survive the funding process. And then we continue, the mayor, Don, and myself, we continue to go through the budget requests and adjust if necessary. And if I liken to putting a puzzle together, we're trying to put the puzzle together to see how we can make all the pieces fit within the funding that we can come up with. the funding that we can come up with. And this is the January planning session meetings in February, this one, and then Monday will be devoted to going through the budget with council, and we'll be taking a deeper dive today and, and next Monday, going through that with council and going into the details. So issues of awareness and direction that we have to keep in mind is the ongoing awareness of the national state and economic indicators and the impact on the city budget. We continue to examine sales and use tax, watching for trends. We monitor capital improvement fund sales tax revenues and related debt service. We, all departments are critically important, but core services such as public safety and maintaining of infrastructure have to remain priorities. We continue to address the police department legacy and other pensions unfunded or accrued liabilities. We address market concerns of the police recruitment, and we continue in the economic development push, building on past successes. Okay, there we go. How do we need to catch up with economic development? The jobs creation, again, quantity, yes, but quality most certainly. We need to continue the efforts of cleanup today and finding new revenue-based ways. We need to expand neighborhood revitalization and give more attention to results. This is, you know, an economic development necessity, and it's also real effects our city's current rating, but more importantly is that it has a dramatic effect on citizens' lives. We need to really focus on that and create, and fixing the environment or improving the environment, if you will. Citizen engagement is key to many areas of this, in my opinion. We should and must be engaged with our customers. If we're not listening to our customers, somebody else will be. Council continues to send a clear message that neighborhood revitalization is, is A, if not B, top priority. Branding and comprehensive plan initiatives are kind of, together kind of becomes the umbrella for all of this moving forward. And as we figure out how to tell our story, what our story is and how we tell it, will help us engage more with citizens, will help us expand the neighborhood revitalization, all of those kinds of things. Now, for review of the budget, so first, the question that we have to ask is, is do we want to ask budget? And although it's not mandatory, but each, each fund is balanced each year, we do need to look at ongoing revenues and ongoing expenditures, and make sure that ongoing revenues exceed ongoing expenditures on a year-to-year basis. That's what I call a structurally balanced budget. You can, you know, technically, it wouldn't be a balanced budget if you're spending down reserves for one-time type expenditures, or if you have a loan that comes in one year and then the next year you're spending, and now it's restricted funds out. It's, it's not balanced each year, but if you're looking at your ongoing or your normal revenues versus your normal expenditures, you want to make sure that that's structurally balanced and that you're not getting ahead of yourself to where you're, you're painting yourself into the so-called corner. But since we have developed, and the state maintained a healthy fund balance, and that helps us to weather a few storms here lately. And then reserves were intentionally spent down a couple, our fiscal years twenty twelve through twenty sixteen, over that four years, we spent down about two million dollars intentionally to, out of reserves to improve some badly needed infrastructure. The addition of use taxes allowed us to continue that higher infrastructure spending over the next couple of years. And then in the last couple of years, though, we hit the point where we had to slow that, that increase in spending down and, and started living where we're at with the fund balance. So now we continue to focus on that ending number of the fund balance at the end. During FY fourteen, the council approved its first ever fund balance policy, and policy required twenty-five, no more than, or no less than twenty-five percent fund balance and no more than fifty percent of revenues at the end of the year. The, so the fiscal year FY ten, fifteen budget was adopted at forty-eight percent, and then sixteen and seventeen, we basically maintained right just under that fifty percent. And then eighteen, we pulled the transportation out, and so nineteen, we amended the policy to accommodate for that transportation being pulled out of it. And so now we're at the thirty-five percent, no less than thirty-five percent and no more than seventy-five percent. So now, if we shift gears, we start looking at our revenue sources. And as you've heard me say several times, sales tax drives the transports. Local taxes make up about forty percent of our total revenue sources, and of twenty-eight percent of that is sales and use tax. So it's by far the, the largest single source of revenue that we have, is also probably the most volatile. It, it runs with the economy, and so it's the hardest to predict, but yet, at the same time, it's, it's very important to us, and we can have the most effect on it with what we do. The next, largest portion of revenues is service charges, that's like the water and food and solid waste, the parks and recreation user fees, the library fees, all of those kinds of things. So when you look at sales tax, it's very important for us to, to watch that and look for trends. And so if you look over the last, from since oh-nine to twenty-one, starting back in oh-nine, we had a large dip during the, the start of recession there in two thousand and nine. We started climbing back out in fiscal year twenty twelve. We took another smaller dip in thirteen through fourteen. And then FY fifteen, we finally climbed back to where we were, just above where we were pre-recession levels. So it took us six years to recover from the recession that started in, in two thousand and nine, just to really get back to where we were, you know, sales tax questions for fiscal year oh-nine. Fiscal year sixteen, where the growth slowed, slowed again, and then seventeen, we took another dip and it left, flattened out. FY eighteen through twenty, we had slow growth again, and then through that, we had seventeen point four, we're, at FY fourteen, we're seventeen point four percent above where we were in FY oh-nine, so roughly a one point four seven percent average growth rate over the last eleven years. So, and as you would guess, our expenses have grown faster than that, so we have to be creating in the ways that we, we manage the expenses and, and what we deliver. Now FY twenty-one, we added the one eight cent sales tax, so that's really the increase that we saw there for FY twenty-one. Without that increase, as Don will report here in just a minute, we're at a combined growth rate of about one and a half percent for FY twenty-one over twenty. So again, we're right at that average growth rate without the one eight cent increase.
For future fiscal years, will we, because of that eight cent increase, will we see a costed increase or will it flatten out? What will we see?
Well, it should, should flatten out here.
Okay.
Um, I hope not see a deal.
Right.
Yeah. So, and of course, the, the eight cent really is dedicated to trade off that debt.
Right. So I didn't know whether it would just show more of a flat curve for us, or?
Yeah, it should, we should see that increase.
Okay, that's what I meant.
One and a half to two percent, or somewhere around there, increase year-over-year. Okay. So when we look at sales and use tax together, the February fiscal year, the sales tax revenues collected are trending one point eight percent higher than FY twenty. You know, we really don't know what the COVID effect was. You know, it, it's been all over the board, so I, I can't really blame it on COVID, other than I know that there are certain industries that are down, that would affect our sales tax, which is most notably the restaurants, and those kinds of things are down. But then how much of that was made up with home improvement sales being up? So I, you know, I do know that we are in much better shape than our neighboring communities. I know Lunchburg was looking for, last I heard, was two million dollars that we're trying to figure out where they were going to come up with. So, you know, I, I know that there was other communities that were hit very hard by it. We thankfully were not, so. We did budget an increase of two percent, so are a little bit under budget for FY twenty-one. The use tax approved in August of twenty fifteen, and it represents about seven percent of our sales tax. So you can see the, the sales tax on the, the blue part of the graph, and the, the use tax added to that on the green part. So that gave us really a, a medium little seven percent increase. And then the use tax this year is down two percent over FY twenty, and so if you combine the two together, we're at a one and a half percent over FY twenty. And if you look over the four years, we're basically four and a half percent over the four years increase, combined increase. We added one eight cents for the Hager Community Center, adds another five point three percent increase in FY twenty-one. So in total, we're at six point eight percent over where we were in twenty twenty-one, but, or in twenty twenty, but five point three percent of that was the eight cent increase. So when we're looking at projections, so I first look at what's going on nationally, and what is the, where the experts slowly, so to speak, propose our, our expect coming forward, where they're looking at. And so the Congressional Budget Office, and they're, they're saying that real GDP or gross domestic product is expected to grow at a twelve point four percent annually in the second half, at that time was the second half of twenty twenty, and, and then level off and be by the middle of calendar year twenty twenty-two, be at, at pre-pandemic levels. And following that initial recovery, the economy continues to expand in the CBO's projections, but it does, does go at a more moderate rate. And they're expecting similar to the pace of the expansion over the past decade. And over the past decade, we've been averaging about a two percent GDP increase. And you can see what they're showing for twenty twenty-one is four point eight, twenty twenty-two at two point two, and then one point three inflation rate and one point seven inflation rate. So what that's really telling us is, is that in summary, we should expect a quick recovery and then a moderate growth recent to, similar to recent. So if you look, apply that to sales tax, that would mean that we're, should expect about the same amount of sales tax growth from a national level. The state of Missouri, when we look closer to home, when we look for the state, their sales tax rose four point six percent in fiscal year, the day through January, and they're a June thirty year in, so that's well over half of the year. Over the previous fiscal year, within the end of the previous fiscal year, a one point seven five percent increase. And then their outlook is, is over the next two years shows a rebound from twenty twenty recession with continuing strong growth through twenty twenty-two. The labor market improves, wages are expected to grow at a moderate pace, which should extend with strong growth in consumer spending beyond the initial recovery. Further reduced oil and energy prices will continue to lose more disposable income in consumers' pockets and hold costs down for, for businesses. The revenue estimates for the twenty twenty-two state budget project a three point nine percent increases, increase when adjusting out the effect of a double filing date for FY twenty-one. They had, since the pandemic, they delayed the filing date for taxes, so in their fiscal year, they had two filing dates in FY twenty-one. So in summary, the Missouri, Missouri is projecting sales tax revenue to increase in the range of three point nine percent for the upcoming fiscal year. When we look here at the column, first place to look is the local jobs projections. And because today it was, in Pettis County, it's more isolated or self-contained from near, near large metro areas, our local jobs and wages have a direct impact on local sales tax revenue. We have what we've enjoyed for several years, what they call negative wage, which means more people are coming to Pettis County to shop than people are leaving Pettis County to spend their money elsewhere. So God's test tells us that if there are fewer jobs or lower wages, people don't have as many dollars to purchase goods, and thereby, fewer sales tax dollars are created. Conversely, though, the more wages, we grow more sales, we grow more sales tax. This is offset somewhat by the online trends of shopping online, but it's still true that the more payroll equals more local sales. This is, so when we look at the unemployment rate in December, in Pettis County, it was four point nine percent, which was up from the recent low in October of three point six percent, and up from the year ago of three point four percent. I said that backwards, and I, three point six percent in October, three point four percent from a year ago, and down significantly, though, from the high, it happened, it happened during the shutdown from the pandemic, up ten point eight percent in May. During the last three years, local businesses have announced job creation, again, that seventy-seven million dollars worth of new payroll. So despite the pandemic, some businesses continue to expand, and our local economic development office has several strong prospects, prospect lists for additional projects, encouraging a strong outlook for growing spending power. So in summary, basically, again, we can expect a stable job growth in, in Pettis County. So putting all of that together, taking all of that information into consideration, what I'm proposing is, is that we project another two percent growth in, in sales tax for, for the upcoming fiscal year in the budget, just compares to the one and a half percent that we just, just went through, that we're experiencing now. So when we look at that in terms of numbers, you can see here where we bring in, last year, we brought in about fourteen point eight million dollars in, in sales tax, and you can see the, the growth across there and what we're projecting. So the two hundred and nine thousand dollars is really where we're looking for total increase from budget year to budget year of, of more funds or more revenue in the, in the total budgets, in, in those different buckets, as you see. In terms of the general fund, if you add that across, we're, we're down fifty-three thousand dollars in, in our projected, where we're going to end the year from where we budgeted. And then we look at that two percent increase at a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars over the projected, that brings us to a net total of sixty, sixty-six thousand seven When we look at the resources allocated or where they, where we spend those funds, as with any other service organization, personnel cost is a big piece of the pie, and especially in our general fund. Our general fund is, is almost entirely personnel cost and, and costs associated with that. So seventy-eight percent of our total general fund expenditures are for personnel, and you can see that the public safety makes up sixty-two percent or so of, or sixty, yeah, sixty-two percent of the total of the pie. And then if you add animal control in there, it's even more. So anyway, they're, they're a big share of what we do, and likewise, so that's one of the priorities of this, of the city. So considerations for the FY twenty-two budget for personnel costs, we have two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, our continued investment or, to try to fund the offset, or the unfunded balance of the police retirement fund. And then when we add that to it, the two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars for the property tax, so it's, it's And then when we add that to it, the $283,000 for the property tax, so it's, uh, it's over five minute, or 500,000 and a half a million dollars that goes into that, but it's, uh, unfunded liability of 6.3 million. And, but now we've got that lot of risk managed and so we should do better on returns and better analyze from that over a shorter period of time. So last year, this contribution was 253,000, so. The police recruitment that we talked about for $30,000, the requested operational increases is IT network technician, and, uh, that's at 35.8 round numbers, uh, for the last six months. Um, health and life insurance increased cost of $67,000. The general fund of that is $40,685. The budgeted health insurance premiums increased for the last quarter of the year. We have now on the January through December, uh, uh, plan year for the health insurance. So that 5% we're lowering on the tech effect in quarter four of our fiscal year. And so, and we continue as a means to control our healthcare costs over the long term is to promote the health savings account and make contributions to that. The workers' compensation, we did a zero increase in our experience mod. We did have some good ones, went down from a 1.10, uh, to a 1.01. So that's going in the absolutely the right direction, which it's had the direct impact on our premiums, so. Way recently, uh, movement, we did, uh, we participated in that Lunsford study. If you remember a couple of years ago, we, we had all of that pulled together and we had the information that we presented to you about that. And the bottom line or the, the major draw from out of that was that overall, we were not too far off from the market, at least what, what the other communities were paying. But it did indicate that there were some positions that we needed to look at, that we were, uh, that we were a little bit out of market. So we made some adjustments in the public safety. Uh, within the FY19 budget, uh, we created a new position of corporate. We added some stipends or moved detectives up with the corporate. We adjusted top end of many ranges and then adjusted the entry level positions and, uh, and reduced the gap in the stretch. And, and then, uh, continuing on in FY20, we made further adjustments in the public safety. We reduced or eliminated the overlap that was created by the FY19 adjustments that we made. And then we adjusted the police sergeant scale by 4% and then equipment operators primarily all moved up one grade, uh, which amounted to about a 5 to 6% increase for all of them. As you had remarked, and rental effect adjustments were made. And then, uh, we, in FY21, we took the step and we increased the law enforcement paid scale by 9%. So in FY21, to, to get us to where the market really is on, on that. So going forward, um, the question becomes, do we continue with, uh, with one of our past practices, which are the normal stat increases for all employees, including the public safety on the public safety plan? Um, and then also we usually look at a COLA and which really COLA is the cost of living adjustment, I'm sorry, um, is, uh, really moves the whole wage scale and it helps us keep up with the market and, uh, and keeps the, the, uh, the, the difference between positions the same, it just moves the whole scale. Then, uh, we are still wanting to move towards merit or pay per performance and, um, as some factor of, of wages, we just, we don't have that figured out yet. We don't have a big way to do that yet and it's going to be different for different physicians in my opinion. So where we're at today and what we put into the proposed budget, that we'll take a harder look at Monday, but, uh, just to look at, uh, a preview here, the normal stat increase is called is $270,000 increase. The 1% COLA makes up 142,000. And then so the total set aside of 12,239 for the general fund, $266,000. Fund 15, uh, that's our major, uh, fund for our capital improvements, where the majority of that comes down. And it's supported by two quartersent sales tax or a half percent total. In the past, most of the second quarter cent was, was allocated to the, uh, the sewer department. And a few years ago, we made the conscious effort to, uh, essentially weaned the sewer department off of that tax support and let the rate payers pay for the service that's being returned. So this allows council not that they can't spend, spend sales tax there, but it makes a, makes a conscious decision rather than a decision being made for you as to how much of those funds we want to take to, uh, expand and infrastructure and those kinds of things in that area. Also for the, the capital improvements, uh, since this fund has to carry the debt service for the previous years, then, um, uh, then, um, we have to look at that debt service of the promises that we've made in the past and make sure that we've got enough funds to cover that before we look in, look at spending more on more infrastructure. So when we look at it in that way, we look at the sales tax, we get about $3 million in sales tax and then we get about another $600,000 in, in other revenues, allocation from the county sales tax and then, uh, the stormwater use tax from, uh, that's the parks and stormwater. So we allocate half of it to stormwater and half of it to the parks. And then the other revenues, um, is primarily in interest and warehouse and those kinds of things. We have, uh, currently, we have about 3.3 million dollars worth of debt service that we have to do, but that includes the Hecker Community Center. And so we have the, the contributions coming in from those sources, the Hecker pledge and then the offset from the Sevilla 200 and then the 8 cent park sales tax increases coming in here to cover, uh, the balance of those payments. So net debt, net debt service, uh, from CIP is 1.3 million dollars. And so that gives us about 2.3 million dollars worth of, of funding on an annual basis that we can utilize for other new infrastructure spending. We also look at the enterprise fund and those are treated differently and rightfully so. In accordance with general accepted accounting principles, we have to separate our financial statements between what they call government activities and business-like activities. And the theory is, is that, um, tax dollars should not be, uh, tax dollars are intended for government activities, not for business-like activities. And business-like fees should not be used to support government-type activities or be created a hidden tax, if you will. So the city has several business-like activities. First, the hospital that's run separately, the water department, the sewer department and the sanitation department. We've spent the last few years taking a really hard look at sanitation and then we looked at that during the, um, uh, during the strategic planning session and talked, uh, had some great discussion about what we need to do. It is a business-like activity and needs to stand on its own. Um, and with the changes in the, over the last few years, we've had, um, rate increases and also have changed the, the services, the level of services and those kinds of things. But the recycling revenue has become cost nonexistent and the landfill charges continue to rise. So we are fighting a losing battle there and trying to reduce costs. So FY22, we are proposing an increase of a fee, in fee of $3 and then also stop the curside recycling. Now, with that said, you know, if the recycling market does come back, uh, you know, we can look at the curside recycling again. I think it's a great idea if we can get it to cost out, but I, I just can't see, uh, incurring the extra costs when it goes to the same spot anyway, because there's no market, so it just goes up the landfill anyway. So we're incurring a lot of extra costs to do nothing. With all of that then, um, basically, uh, the, uh, if, if we do all of that, essentially we come out to about a $172,000 operating income, but then we've got about $290,000 lease payments every year for the, for the trucks. And so if you look at it from, um, declaring operating expenses over revenues, our revenues over expenses, 172,000, the add back in and depreciation, you're at about a $371,000 cash generated from operations. And then, uh, that offsets the capital like debt service of 290,000 and generates 81,000 per year, which you can use, um, for, um, additional capital or setbacks capital. But as you can see, the, the operating 171 over the 290, uh, you know, long-term, you still can't, can't get there. You can't, you can't replace the equipment, uh, as it wears out at that rate. Plus, we are, um, already in the hole, so that's really, uh, we've created a loan from other funds to offset it. Um, but there's about a $278,000 that needs to be paid back that, that hasn't been paid back after that. So, uh, that just gets us to the point where we're starting to make down payments on that as opposed to, um, really getting there. Uh, I will say that I just learned that, um, uh, here recently that, you know, the market, we're not too far off in the market. Uh, it's my understanding Ditchfield Transfer, which is a for-profit organization, is, is raising their fees to that same number, that $18. And we're doing things that they love doing and that's the bulkways pickup and those kinds of things and, and, you know, keep the city clean. We don't limit the amount of trash that, that people can put in the parks. And, uh, and so it's, uh, you know, I, we're not too far off, I guess, from where we should be. So that makes sense. So in final, uh, the initial draft looks like this. We're at, the general fund is about a $294,000 loss. Um, when I finally got all the numbers in, we were looking at a $1.3 million loss. And so I had to go through and, and work that down and, and try to put the focal together and, and figure out where to, where to make that work. So I moved some, moved some things around, moved to other funds where we can, uh, where we can utilize other, other types of funds. But anyway, got us to where our ending fund balance is now at 8.9 million, which is 66%, which is well within our fund balance policy and actually is an increase over, uh, last year, which we were at 62% for our budget. So, um, our projections and, and that was some of that loss is that some of the things that we had budgeted for in FY21 are now getting carried over to FY22. So that is some of that, you know, stayed up in the reserves and then is moving over to be in spin out this year. The capital improvement fund, uh, that big loss that you see there is really the timing of the loan. We got the loan this year, uh, for the Hecker Community Center, but yet the construction expenses won't be all paid out this year. They'll be paid out partially next year. It's about $11 million that is moving there. Um, uh, you know, 11 million this year and then the other 14 million is coming out next year. So that, but that ends with a fund balance of, of about 2.9, which is about where we started, uh, at FY20. So, and then part of that too is, is, uh, we utilize some of that out of reserves to do the annual purchase, if you remember. Um, and, uh, and so that was, that was part of it and getting, getting that recovered. Transportation, uh, the big difference there is it was again in the, in the 33121, um, projections, that was where we spent down on that finger, uh, to spend out of reserves, uh, part out of there and part out of the capital improvement. And so that, uh, reduced the, the fund balance starting, but then we had a, basically a break even through $53,000 profit in this budget or excess of revenues over expenditures, not profit, excuse me, is, uh, in, in the fund balance, our ending with a 789,000 by the fund balance. Library fund, um, they, uh, I always project a revenues equal expenditures and usually they, they come in all along the budget and so they, they build a fund balance there. Uh, so they've got some, some good reserves. The park fund, um, again is, is pretty much at a, at a zero balance, um, but, um, have built up in the past a $3 million healthy reserve and part of that was intentional and, uh, and we know that there's going to be a settling period with the, um, community center and, you know, we know there's going to be some upfront costs and some unknowns and so that, that fund balance is, is, uh, is good to be, good to rely on there. Um, let's see, the cultural business and our central business and cultural fund, uh, they're going to spend down, so they proposed a budget to spend down some of their, uh, some of their reserves that they built up over in the past. And we encouraged them to do so, so this, this does reflect their recommendation. And, uh, basically what they're spending it down on is what we encourage them to do as well, is, uh, is on bricks and mortar, facade grants and those kinds of things. So, uh, actually putting those dollars to use and, and, and get them, getting them, uh, the downtown fixed up. Fire Academy, basically a break even, uh, the capital improvements fund, uh, that one, uh, we need to see what was going on in the past and I just haven't been able to dig into that, but it really needs to be combined with Fund 15. Really, we just use that for running grants through, so it should be always be a zero balance. Um, the, uh, missed down the tip, that's where the street scape advance has gone through and so, uh, over the, uh, next year, they should be able to pay down some of that advance and then next year should be back even. Water pollution control and the water department and all of those, so again have, uh, fairly good fund balances, not as high as I would like for them to be in case of something catastrophic, but they're, they're helping and, and they're, they're okay. The sanitation fund, we have that note again, that, um, we need to resolve that, that net balance of, uh, of a negative fund balance to, to get it offset. So, uh, the fire pension fund and the police pension fund, we can see those there again, um, where they're at. So, um, so that's the summary of where we're at today and we'll again get the opportunity to dive into it in more detail of what the details are Monday. So what's next is we've got the budget workshop session for Monday at 6:30 PM. At that time, we'll have some of these issues discussed in a presentation, we'll, we'll need some decisions or we'll want to make some decisions. And then if desired, the council, by the council, we can do other budget work sessions. We can spend as much time on this as you all care to. And then a public hearing is scheduled for March 15th and then council will consider adoption of the FY22 budget on, on March 15th after the hearing. And I put a note in there that we can delay that up until the 31st of, of March if council so desires. So be happy to entertain any questions, um, any comments? Thank you, sir. Good presentation. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your information. You presented very well. Next, we'd please like to move on to, uh, Dawn Jennings, who is at the floor, and give us an update on the tax revenue collection.
All right. Well, Kelvin hit on the sales and use tax, so I won't repeat the same information. Um, the franchise tax, so I did want to point out typically the cable, uh, franchise tax comes in by the end of January, but did not get posted until February 2nd. Had it come in and posted by January 31st, we would actually be sitting at an increase of 6.7% for the month and 10.9% for the year. So, um, transportation tax is down primarily in the area of gasoline tax. I would assume that the greatest impact months of I would assume that the greatest impact, most of the impact remain through July, so it seems that's connected to the pandemic exit. The property tax corrections are, are up. As Kelvin pointed out, we're on trend. It looks like we're going to hit that two percent anticipated increase for sales tax. Be happy to entertain any questions.
I would just add on the, on the gas tax, basically, that is not locally, has locally impacted. That is a statewide tax, and so what we're suffering for from is, is really the statewide increase in, in gas tax. We get an allocation out of that pot based on, I don't know, how many miles of road we have or whatever. I mean, I actually can't remember the formula, but it's, so that's why, you know, even though our local economy can be doing well or bad, as the case may be, that gas tax is really affecting most states, how many people are traveling throughout the state, so.
Thank you. The third item that we have this evening is, Lawrence Fernando Lenerius has made an application for a transient merchant and private license to operate a mobile truck known as Tacos, uh, I can't, um, his request is to operate during the day on Thompson Road, just north of Broadway, and one of the conditions to obtain this license is the permission from the owner of the property where this unit will be operated, which, of course, is on the city street, so the owner of the property is the city. Let's see, is requesting permission from the city to operate this business on city property, four hundred block of Thompson Road.
It's good tacos.
How many do we have like this? Is this the city owner one?
The only one I know of that's operating on a city road.
Has anyone ever asked to do that?
Not since I've been here. Has anybody else requested that you know him? Yeah.
This is, this, this business has been operating, you've been there for a while, I think you're listening. Do you know that, don't?
I only saw one private business license, and I'm not sure that the issue was wrong about him being on a public street with a previous license in his name, and so luckily he was just the application to say, hey, is this, is this okay?
So this particular operation, like any of these other vendors like this, goes through the normal process of county health inspection, and obviously, they need to get a city merchant license, and they have been asked, but, Don, you became aware that, that it was a short call or with the permission. I think they handle all well with the neighbors, I'm assuming that, that's my understanding. Any other questions or?
Couple of winners.
There it is.
Oh, they approved the license.
Yeah, I want you to read your, um, excuse me. That's what I thought. Okay, my, it's a license for approval. Just, we're just gonna make a motion to approve the license somewhere for a second.
Steve, did you have a question?
We set that, which is why, I'm reluctant, at least initially, that it set that precedent. Say that again, see if I'm sorry.
I'm reluctant to set the precedent of, of providing that on a city street. I mean, it's not as good, there's, I'd like to have a little discussion about it before we.
Because that's the way we have, we're having, we're discussing. Am I the one who's bothered by that? I'm not necessarily bothered by it, and I'm kind of reluctant. I mean, I don't want, you gotta get an in-house meeting and say, hey, I'd like to set up on Third Street, Grand Square, I'm going to be, I'd like to set up on Grand, I'd like to set up.
But I think there's a bigger issue in this picture, and I don't think we're addressing what it is. We have several of these units that are almost scattered all over town. Does anybody know they really have a license? Because we have no way of tracing that.
Is that there, we have a list of who has license towards the health department, but are you speaking of license to?
A few licenses to do business, that's the portion of it, which would clear the other side of the inspection by the health department. And then they require that they disclose their license. Correct. But who checks this?
Right.
What's the problem with that?
Well, really, nobody comes in and, for example, I'm in business for, since nineteen fifty-five, I don't ever refer anybody coming in and inspecting my license. No? That's the emergency license. I haven't had anybody come in and inspect it.
Mayor, I, I've kind of spoke a little bit with the, the fire chief as we do their inspections, and, and a point that we, we don't know if they can do it because I haven't followed up really more, but it's a possibility to have, they visit over business in town with their inspections. It's a possibility that there could be a bump on their firm that could be when they do that inspection, that their license number be put on that firm. That would be the actual trace to do it, if we could do it that way. So they're already, if they're in next town, they're going to give their license number.
So is this, do you think, in this case, is this an issue worth of licensing?
I don't, no, I don't think that license, because we already know that we've already applied for the license. I think the issue here, what Steve is bringing up, is a precedent, precedence of putting this particular one on the street. And I think if somebody else comes along and says, I want to put another one on another street, some other place.
Well, this is, if this particular unit has been operating on the street probably longer than they've had a license.
I would imagine. I, I would agree with you there.
So they, they did get a license last year, is that what Craig got?
Yeah, last year, I think that was the month.
And so you became aware that that part of this is getting approval from the owner of the property. It says we're the owner, that we need to get that approved.
Yeah. And that's, that's where, you know, the decision here from the council is the, the permission to be on the street. And so as I understand, I mean, you can make that decision on a case like a business basis, you know, so I don't know if it's really a set precedence, but I'll, I'll let Joe speak to that. I, I think the answer is really going to be, as long as we're not arbitrary and capricious about how we make those decisions, then we can say yes to one and no to another.
That's actually a perfect segue to the comments I was going to make. It, it is dangerous, I think, for a council to make a decision without having some sort of parameters in place or having to discuss parameters, sounds to me, and again, this is my first time hearing this, so I'm not certain of exactly how this one operates, but to the extent that this is operating on an actual true street where traffic is driving as well, that seems like a safety hazard, something we should consider. I mean, and, and there's a difference between public property that is a, an actual used thoroughfare as opposed to like a public parking lot, especially from a safety standpoint. My recommendation might be that if you haven't actually issued licenses and haven't allowed this activity to occur as of yet, maybe you would delay making a decision on this particular one until you've had an opportunity at least to develop some sort of, uh, uh, standards or some sort of a, a kind of like threshold of considerations that would be put in place before you would issue one, you know, and, and my, my personal opinion is that, you know, if you've got someone, you know, depending on how a food truck is sitting or wherever your people are, you know, where are they parking, where are people standing to make orders, where are they getting, you know, the food, that's actually being the, the, the right of way that maybe you issue. Probably off on the sidewalk on the other side, so, you know, that, that helps a little bit. It doesn't, you know, it may not address, you know, the, the concerns of traffic having to drive around the truck while it's sitting there, that type of thing. So maybe it would have to do, you know, with the width of the street or the time of day that we're doing it, you know, things like that that you might want to consider to say, okay, you know, once we run through that, we've considered, you know, these safety-type issues that get past that arbitrary capricious question, would say, you know, hey, you know, normally, we don't even allow this, you know, on public property. It has to be on private property, so, you know, in order to do it on public property, we just have to make sure it's safe.
There isn't sidewalk, but there are, yeah. Where they are in the street or?
Don't they, the, the customers gather on the right side of the place on the parking line. It's a, just a patch of grass.
Yeah, so, I mean, the window is facing.
Facing the private property.
So what does the council want to do in this case? Yeah, I think I'm going to withdraw that motion at this point. I don't, I kind of, I'm kind of agreeing with the council on this, but a little bit more research on the safety of this for one thing. I was kind of curious, is this just communes where we can put up and, and do our thing and leave? Have we approached, because he's sitting right next to an almost empty parking lot, right?
Right. I, I know, I wanted to have a purchase license, but I just, yeah, with the city, the safety was, yeah, it's my traffic up and down Thompson. But I, I think we should follow councils.
I would make my motion to actually table this for a little moment. Would that affect him being able to do business, if we table it?
So are we conscious of, if there've been any compliance generated out of this operation? Chief?
About looking at our incident log, I don't know for certain, I've heard that some people complain about it in traffic happens, but I don't have to take it in front of the other two different ones. Can we issue anything temporary to allow him to operate and then direct him to move to a private property? Is that a possibility?
You don't have to pay, yeah, yes. What's his, I don't know, it's, whatever the council wants to do, in which direction we want to go in.
So can he still operate, just not on a city street? Because those three trucks are all over the.
Yeah, you can operate if we can.
He would just need to find a new place.
Well, I mean, I would, couldn't we just go a little bit to the north and get onto, is it, uh, furniture store or?
In the front, there's a park.
Forty K comes out all the way to that street, don't they?
No, the parking lot doesn't come all the way out.
The, the back portion of it, yeah. I see, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, he, I, I think he's, people know he's there, but I mean, this was an important enough situation that wouldn't feel like we need to, we don't want to defund necessarily not have a purchase license, but we wanted to have that purchase license. But I don't think we should show the background. Well, we, we, we should have a discussion about this, but I, I don't think we should hold it up, I mean, I just couldn't move on table with this.
Well, I think with Mr. Lambert here, and I guess the question would be is to, I don't know how to say this out in point blank, is that we really kind of felt we was the city because we've already done this, we've already had a license for a year, and now with our new finance person here, we've caught this. I guess I'd like to see him have the license in some form to be able to do business, but I think at this point in time, he needs to move to a different area until we can get this resolved. You know, we get there, as you brought out, and I wasn't thinking of that, there, there was no sidewalk there, okay? I don't know that within the street whether or not that truly allows for parking in that area on the street. You know, there are some streets that we have are not wide enough to be able to do that, and are both sides. We don't know those answers at this point. So I think for him to do, to continue business, that we do allow the license, but he has to move where he's at to get this resolved, and letting him know that we will figure out a way to resolve this one for him to do it.
You may not like that resolution, but.
If it allows him to stay out. I mean, if he denies on the city streets, then, I mean, that's really the only issue I have, is, is, I mean, we can issue him a license if he has permission of where he's going. So we can just say council's not comfortable with this at this point, and tell him that he needs to go somewhere else.
But I, in all fairness to him, I think we need to give him sufficient warnings. I love it.
Yes.
Sure, I would agree. I mean, he does, I don't, you know, I've been there a couple of times, and he maintains it, takes care of the trash, I would agree. And no doubt, it is his license expired, but that, when does his current license expire? I don't know.
I believe it expires on March.
So Kelvin's recommendation is a good one. I, I, I don't think that, I can't imagine he has that.
That over true, that's. I'm sorry, I just had a quick question, is when we issue this type of a license, is that license, is it specific to a certain address or? Okay, they are, so they can only, so for a food truck, you have to be at the same place all the time?
No, they, they just have to ask permission from the owner, wherever they're going to go. So if they're, this guy, he does go to the same spot all the time.
Okay.
And so he's, he's got to show that he has permission from the owner.
And apparently, we require that permission via the issue of the license as opposed to, I was at fact, so. Okay. So if a individual wanted to operate a food truck in, you know, one area of town and then, you know, given time of the year, where the activity's going on in town, and they wanted to move their truck because there's better traffic, would they then come back and, and request a new address, or how, how do we manage that now?
We have this, this is a transient license.
It is, but we have not had that issue arrive. All of the units we have, correctly, and I'm aware of, all have a fifth location, and they have permission of the private property owner.
Well, but they don't. We, we did have, so we do have certain times we issue certain parameters, like we have a downtown festival.
Sure.
And events, where we have food trucks established, and we do, we do have special parameters we issue.
Like a special event?
Yeah, yeah.
So on this transient license, though, I mean, so it, it, it does not change addresses then? Or?
I don't know if there's not any there at all, I haven't been around long enough.
Arguably, you know, I think to what Mr. Shaw was saying, you, you know, if it is a truly a transient license and we don't have the time, address, so you could issue the license, the gentleman could still operate his business, just not on the public street at this point in time, until we could get some sort of parameters put together that might allow that. Um, you know, I, depending on what the council comes up with, though, you know, it might not be that spot anymore, it might be a different spot, you know, that, that meets better requirements, you know, either on-street parking of some sort or wide enough street, sidewalk, you know, those types of facilities.
Well, that's a good point. I think those are all critical factors.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we necessarily have to stop it from working, I mean, you can still issue the license, you can work elsewhere until, you know, just to see if you can get this to work. And you could always get the permission of a, of a property nearby, which I think is what they, you know, the comments have been, at least, you know, to not halt the business completely, these options.
So are we, are we going to give this merchant some leeway on time? Are we going to just immediately say, Mr. Malonearius, I think it's his name, right? He's going to have to move some more. I mean, I'll just throw this out.
So his license expired on the first, is that what you said on?
Definitely within the last two weeks, I apologize, I didn't mean.
That's okay. So should he have applied earlier for this, since it's the sixteenth?
He did, and this was the first available.
Okay.
So is he currently operating without a license then?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, okay. It's all about the enforcement.
So he should have applied earlier then, to be on the, okay.
Did you accept a motion to grant a license with stop on-street parking until we come back with a, with a resolution to this?
Are you going to make a motion?
Yes.
I'll second. All right, well, we could open it here, we could.
The motion is to approve the license without on-street parking.
Yeah. He's going to have to find another location. And, and we want to make sure you understand, Will, I think the council's going to.
Well, I, we got motion, I second. Yeah, and just a little bit prior discussion on this, I think we're, you know, this transient license, we did to go and take a little bit deeper look at this also, because I do know that this guy does go down some of the functions downtown. Well, if he's down downtown, he's, he's moved down and moved left functions downtown. So, but our functions downtown, sometimes we close the streets off, and that changes that whole picture there also, so I think this is an area that needs to, something to do of some sort.
He comes in, yeah.
Yeah, but does he have to apply again since he's already got his license? Well, I agree, our response when he is in, that's.
Yeah, we're talking about it, yes.
Scott Duffield is there?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Anyway, thank you. So, we have a motion to serve it. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close.
Okay.
The license filed?
Yeah.
Do you follow the application to say where it can be?
We're giving them the timeframe to move, and do we agree on that timeframe?
Yeah, and I, I think what we do is, is we just tell him, okay, we can grant him the license, but he can't park on the street. He doesn't have permission of the city to, to do it on the street, so he has to find a place where the owner approves, uh, of that spot, so.
I'm just curious, do the council like it if, uh, if staff were to come up maybe with some suggestive parameters that you could discuss at your next meeting, we can, you know, we can kind of move this thing along for you and get you in a position to, to get something adopted, uh, more quickly?
Uh, well, yes.
We'll, uh, I'll work with, uh, Dawn on that, and we'll get that taken care of.
I mean, is the goal not to have merchants on the street, except with the council, or is it just sort of parameters about that street?
Yeah.
And my understanding, Mayor, was that, you know, I, I don't think that the, the council, at least in initial discussion, has a problem with being on the street, it's only safe. You know, if you have streets that have, have, you know, uh.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalk parking or something like that along, uh, the sidewalk, where they could park there, and then, you know, someone could stand on the sidewalk, you got, that seems, you may have reasons.
If we determine that this area is safe, uh, do we kind of ask him, you know, maybe in two weeks, so we're going to come along and ask and tell him, you guys should move his, his, uh, merchant, or his business?
I think we have to tell him right now that council didn't give the approval, so he, he needs to move his business now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just one that hurt.
It's a good, it's a bad news situation, you know, he can still operate, he just can't operate the same place he was, I think, you know, so we're not trying to shut him down completely, but, uh, just want to make sure it's safe.
And we think we're trying to, I think that's our goal. No, 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 no. I think it is. I mean, he operated here for three years, so maybe, and he's been second item, so the council.
Well, that, I, 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 I mean, I think that, that's not my goal at all, my goal is to have a safe situation, that's exactly right, and, and.
I'm not impressed, and we just. No, what are you thinking, I, I brought that out, and I just, I'm just saying that. So, if we amend our rights and determine this area is safe, we can conceitfully go back to there.
Yeah.
I mean.
We need to.
I don't know, we, I've done all the complaints along different places, including my own, I have never had a complaint with that one. So, go ahead, go ahead, check it out.
Is that it, or the finance administration?
Chairman, time to settle.
All right. We have two items for consideration tonight, one is a memorandum, uh, of understanding with the Paternal Order of Police, we entered this back in two thousand and seventeen, and this is an amendment including some of the general updates and modifications of that. One, uh, we've added stipends as a means to compensate for additional duties. Two, we've amended, uh, to modify the promotion of sergeant process, which includes previous evaluations and disciplinary actions, as well as, see here, um, clarifying a listing of eligible candidates. Thirdly, we have, uh, modified the outlining for promotions to corporal to be consistent with the sergeant promotions, and lastly, with section eleven, dashes zero seven for call payback, was modified to eliminate the necessity and ambiguity of designation of an event as an emergency for the purposes of applying this section. Chief, is there anything to add to that?
All right.
We also have two representatives here from the FOP. And I think you all are in agreement with the, their thing, right? Any clarity, if you want to come up?
You can say any clarity when you add, or if you want to understand what you give back.
Any questions from the council? Good. All right, will you do orders, please?
On number twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, an order submitting a memorandum of understanding binding between the cities of Souda and Missouri and the Paternal Order of Police, building Missouri Lodge Number Sixteen.
Second reading.
Second. All favor? Aye, propose.
On number twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, an order submitting a memorandum of understanding binding between the city of Souda and Missouri and the Paternal Order of Police, building Missouri Lodge Number Sixteen.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dawson is absent, Bogus is absent, Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Oden?
Yes.
So, that's six yes and two absent.
The second item we have tonight is for laptop replacement for a private property, the private property using laptops docked in trucks to communicate with dispatch, location of hydrants, and capturing reporting information. They have also recently began to use a tablet to assist with these functions. Tablets are being more, being more mobile, provide more flexibility for use on the scene to continue communications or reporting capabilities. The laptops have, have an expected useful life of five years, but they're now about six to seven years old. So, staff has researched and found a hybrid model of a tablet that were also docked in the truck with its full keyboard, which can be removed and used as a tablet on the phone. Same company manufactures this model as a, as a current laptops, which have been very reliable for a tough, in tough environment. These units are designed specifically designed for public safety. Transient Mobile has provided a close to a quality procurement contract, which meets our procurement policies. It's just that, so staff recommends approval of the purpose of four Panasonic tablets, keyboards, and associated hardware from Transient Mobile of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Any council's discussion?
Chief, anything to you?
And we'll work with Marla on this, and, uh, we've had this expector, we live on him because of David Burden.
All right, will you do this, please?
On number twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, an order submitting and accepting a quote binding between the cities of Souda and Missouri and Transient Mobile for Panasonic tablet hybrid tablets to be used by the Souda Fire Department.
Second reading, second. All favor? Aye, propose.
On number twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, an order submitting and accepting a quote binding between the cities of Souda and Missouri and Transient Mobile for Panasonic tablet hybrid tablets to be used by the Souda Fire Department.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bogus is absent, Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Oden?
Yes.
And Dawson is absent, so that's six yes and two absent.
So, all the works, please.
The other, I have two items this evening. First has to do with the budget amendment, if you recall, back in December, we decided to purchase the hangar from Pro Energy at the airport, and that would require us to do a budget amendment, I will take you through just a little bit of the, the items behind that. Uh, with buying that one twenty by one twenty hangar, we have some added things that we can do at the airport and increase our availability of services that we have out there. And with those services and the associated fees, we'll be able to pay out this assets that we figured it out roughly over a ten-year period. And what this does is it's, it's, it amends the budget so we can do appropriation of the funding for this particular project.
Any comments, questions from council?
If you all noticed from the picture earlier tonight, we, by the way, got that hangar pretty much filled. Where's Derek? He did a great job out there, yeah. He was saving the water.
All right, any orders, please?
Okay, it's a resolution, nineteen twenty-three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Souda, Missouri, authorizing an increase in expenditures in the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one regarding to purchase of the premium hangers and additional tools needed.
Second reading.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Propose?
We just need a motion in a second, so we're good.
Thank you.
Call for any orders?
I thought we had an order, sir, council.
We do.
We do.
It is a resolution.
Yes, a resolution and an ordinance, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, on number twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, an order submitting the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one regarding the purchase of the premium hangers and additional tools needed.
Second reading.
Second.
All favor?
Aye, propose.
On number twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, an order submitting the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one regarding the purchase of the premium hanger and additional tools needed.
Second reading, final passage.
Second reading. Roll call, please.
Okay, Richardson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Bogus is absent, and Bogus is absent, so that's six yes and two absent.
Yeah, the last item I have has to do with the contract extension, and it's a, well, a piece of software package that's developed by Economic and Social Research Institute, and it's used to manage geographic information where water mains and wells, and this is a license and support agreement for this next fiscal year, and it's one thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars.
You discuss it? Will you do orders, please, Solon?
On number twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, an order submitting and accepting a quote binding between the cities of Souda and Missouri and Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated for a one-year contract renewal of the U S I software for licensing, support, and maintenance for the J I S program used by the Water Division.
Second reading.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Propose?
On number twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, an order submitting and accepting a quote binding between the cities of Souda and Missouri and Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated for a one-year contract renewal of the U S I software for licensing, support, and maintenance for the J I S program used by the Water Division.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Dawson is absent, Bogus is absent, and Richardson?
Yes.
So, that's six yes and two absent.
Six yes. That's all I have, you know. Thank you, Chris. Any comments?
Thank you.
All right, we have a, a, a question?
Yes. To members of the City Council Premier John Katie, I would like to appoint Lawler Municipal Law LLC as interim city attorney and interim prosecutor, with Joe Lawler as interim city attorney, and Jeremy Cooper as interim prosecutor, and ratifying actions taken by that firm on the city's behalf back to February second, twenty twenty-one. The appointment is Lawler Municipal Law at two fifteen North East Two, the Road, Bay Summit, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Propose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Letter of license, Solon?
Okay, they are all in the city, Jane Navia doing business at Broadway Liquor and Smokes at twenty sixteen West Broadway Boulevard, Package Liquor for Sunday sales and taste testing, Tyler Singer doing business with Always Incorporated at thirty-seven oh one West Broadway for Package Liquor and General Liquor, Coach Robinson doing businesses at Sage Garden Pond, one sixteen West Moon for Package Liquor, Erica Eisenlinger doing businesses at the Grill at three seventeen South Ohio for Sunday sales, Kristen Bellack doing businesses in the Wanas Barbecue at twenty-nine oh one West Broadway for a low beverage license, and Michael Smith doing businesses at Estaron, twenty-four hundred South Room for Liquor by the Gin for Sunday sales.
Motion proven, Bob.
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
Propose. Anybody want to say anything? Good, okay.
I want to say a great job to our street department, all the guys working on power trucks tonight and throughout this week, you done, you did a job, and.
So, maybe we'll have another still in there tonight?
They're staying here for, just, no.
No school tomorrow.
And chief peril to you and your men out there, thank you guys so much for everything that we're doing. You've ended pretty and lovely week this last week, so, thank you, guys.
Anybody else?
Water Department, thanks to cut the main. Been some Willetuck deals out on Grand, same deal, full red, flat work.
How did fighter get that towed today?
Yes, sir.
Doing okay?
Yes, sir. So, I got, what, how the fighter, that injured, I have to work today. I get a good, tell me, what, tell me about it? And I twisted an ankle, and. I don't mean, it acted the last, or the last one, or. I. The house on, uh, you used, uh, Broadway, this was on third, 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 come to fifteen. Yeah. In the house, I've been on Broadway, uh, Thursday, they, uh, they gave no, uh, 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 third, uh, probably trying to say, I mean, they had no insurance on the first name back, and so, they're in bad need of, 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 of help, so I took several there. I'm truly appreciating the things that, that we do, Lord.
Was there a church next door that was helping?
Yes.
Was that the one, I read the paper?
It was posted on Facebook to the church next door, which actually owned the house, yeah, I believe, that were processing, helping him. I remember managing.
Okay.
It's a church, the house, uh, uh, uh.
Well, well, be anybody at the house, take it to the church.
Yeah, the church, yeah.
Anybody from, uh, spectators here that would like to say a few words, there's a lot of names here tonight? We have a new investigative reporter from Souda, here tonight, Chris Erle. So, we, uh.
Your honor, hearing done, I'll make a motion, we want to call a session.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Freeman?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Dawson is absent, Bogus is absent, Richardson?
Yeah.
Cross?
Yes.